Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March meeting of the Concord zoning board of adjustment. If you will bear with me for a moment, I will go through some information concerning the special nature of the COVID era meeting. Due to the COVID-19 coronavirus and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, the zoning board of adjustment is authorized to meet electronically. The City of Concord will be utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting by following this link. And you'll see that link on your screen if you're tuned in. That is slash slash U S zero two web, all one word, dot zoom dot U S slash J slash six one zero nine one nine three one eight. Enter that into your browser and you'll be tuned in. Or you can dial the following number and enter the following ID number at the prompt. The number is one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. And the webinar ID is six one zero nine one nine three one eight. And that's also up on your screen if you're watching. On the other hand, if you're watching, you probably don't need this information. Note that the telephone participation will be enabled at the end of each public hearing. All participants, please keep your phones and computers on mute unless speaking. Members of the public can also email questions or other public testimony to code@concordnh.gov and staff will read the text testimony or question into the record during meeting. Any member of the public can also call code zoning administration, zoning administrative office during the meeting at six oh three two three zero three six four six. They're unable to access the meeting and if assistance with connecting is needed. Materials can be requested from the zoning administration division via email or by calling and leaving a message at six oh three two two five eight oh. Meeting agendas and the cases can be accessed at conquer nh.gov/280. That's two eight zero zoning board, zoning dash board dash of adjustment. I guess I should start with the roll call this evening, starting with Ms. Scott.
I'm here and I'm alone in my work office.
Mr. Wallner.
Uh, Nicole Wallner, I'm here alone in my office.
I was on mute, but now I'm not. I'm here alone in my home office.
Mr. Waiters.
I'm here, I'm alone in my basement.
And Mr. Sikowski.
Hey, everybody, I'm here in my spare bedroom alone.
And I'm also here in my office and I'm alone. We will be departing from our usual procedure a little bit this evening, but we will follow most of it. We will be doing a, going through the cases in order with one exception, which I'll explain in a moment. I'll ask the appellant to be sworn in and give us whatever testimony they would like us to hear. We request that they confine their testimony to 10 minutes if at all possible. After the appellant's have testified, we will ask for testimony from anyone who is in favor of the appeal and from anyone who is in opposition to the appeal. We ask that those people confine their testimony to five minutes to the extent that they can. Following all of that, I will check in with code enforcement, find out if there are any, there's any information from that office that we ought to hear. And then if any testimony has been offered that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new, not new argument prior to our closing, public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case and make a decision before moving on to the next one. The first case this evening is going to be zero seven twenty-one, which is shown as the second case on your agenda. The reason for moving it is that one of the board members, me, has a conflict of interest on this case. And so we're going to move it to the top so that the board member who is sitting as an alternate can sign off after that case if they wish to do so. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Wallner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first case tonight is case seven twenty-one, Christopher and Deborah Carley. Applicant wishes to construct an accessory garden shed and request variances to, number one, Article twenty-eight dash four dash one H table of dimensional regulations to allow structure to be located not less than six and one half feet from a property line where a front setback of 25 feet is required. And Article twenty-eight dash five dash thirty-two accessory buildings and facilities to allow an accessory structure to be located in the front yard where accessory sheds are to be located to the side or rear of the principal structure on the property for property located at four Vernon Street in an RS residential single family district. Will both of you be testifying tonight?
Only I will be testifying.
All right. Would you raise your hand, please? Ms. Carley, do you swear to tell truth, hold truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome to tonight's zoning board meeting. Please tell us what you want to do.
You have the application in front of you. We wish to construct a garden shed that lies within both the front yard setback and, and the, lies within the front yard and is in the front yard setback. And I will address the points, the reasons that we are asking for a variance as I go through the packet here. So the first point, the special conditions of our lot are that we are kind of in a wedge shaped lot. We have a long piece of frontage on Liberty Street, which is more our backyard and, but it counts as a front yard because it's a major street. And then our front yard is on Vernon Street and we, I think the requirement in this district is about 100 feet of frontage. We have over 300 feet of frontage there. And the lot is very steep. The grade between Vernon Street and Liberty Street is quite, quite steep. So it's not practical for us to have the shed in the back because we need driveway access for it. We want to put a snow blower there. We want to be able to, to act, to put our trailer in and out of the shed. We keep our kayaks on a trailer and so forth. So those are the reasons that we're asking for a variance because of specific conditions. Oh, and also right off the driveway is a spectacular sycamore tree that is one of the more beautiful features of, of the street, really. People stop and comment on it all the time. And yep, that's it. That was, that's the sycamore right there in the sod, in the side yard just behind the garden boxes. We do have long frontage on Vernon Street and the house was built in the 1860s. It actually is closer to the street than the proposed shed. And everyone else on our street has a shed. So where we're proposing to put this does not in any way alter the character of the residential neighborhood. The street in this case is actually narrower than the right of way. So there's ample room for the shed to be off the traffic area and it's hidden by mature And coming to the question of authorization of a variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The, the loss of the use, if we were to be denied this variance, is much, much greater than any negligible benefit to our neighbors from, from our not building the shed. In fact, the shed might look better than the blue tarp's we have in the side yard right now. I personally contacted all of the immediate abutters as well as all the neighbors whose property lies within 300 feet of ours and asked if they had any concerns. I believe that you have received emails from four of our immediate neighbors, George and Debbie Russo's, Dave and Penny Bean, Kate Dolan and Rick and Meg Aquilano, who are the only houses that would actually see the shed. And I believe that they did reach out to Craig to indicate that they had no concerns. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I will be introducing those letters as part of the testimony tonight. Are there any questions from members of the board?
What's the proposed size of the shed?
Uh, um, what is the dimension of the shed? I don't know, maybe like 12 by 18 or something.
It shows, it shows on your plans, I think fourteen by 22.
Okay, 14 by 22. So it needed to be long enough for the kayaks to go in on the trailer and stuff. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I see. Yep.
Craig, this is Laura. Can you put the aerial photo back, the aerial view back up, the GIS, please? Because I know there was material provided in our packet, but it's, it's always nice to see that, that picture. Thank you.
So often about between 10 and 11 o'clock in the area that's shaded by a bunch of hemlocks and stuff, that's where the shed will be tucked. And you can see that all along Vernon Street, we have some very mature rhododendrons. And then there are some hemlocks that go farther down. So essentially the shed will barely be visible at all from the street. That's Vernon Street. Yeah, thank you, Craig.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Are there any other questions for members of the board? No. Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against this application? I have four emails that support this. The first one is from Rick Aquilano at eighty-nine Liberty Street. He has no objections to the Carly's building a shed and the subsequent variance. Feel free to contact me. No, you don't need to hear that. We also have one from Susan Bean for Vernon Street. We have no objection to the Carly building a shed. We then have one from Kate Dolan of ten St. John Street. I just wanted to let you know that I have no objections to the Carly's shed. And finally, we have one from Deborah Russo's of 14 Auburn Street. And they have no objections. Craig, give any comments for us?
Nope, I don't have anything additional to add.
And normally I'd say, Ms. Carley, do you have anything additionally you want to offer us in reference to additional testimony that I submitted?
It's a lovely little neighborhood, small, only five driveways on the street. As I said, everyone has a shed. We all get along very well. And they all just want to know when the, you know, housewarming party is, so I do not have anything to add.
Craig, you have no comments? And with that, I'll declare the hearing closed. I'm sorry, Craig, do you have comments? Do I remember if I asked you that or not?
You, you did, and I still don't.
Well, being acting chair has its challenges for me. The hearing is closed. So what, what say members regarding this case?
This is, I think it's a reasonable use. The, the other locations on the site that would meet zoning have top, topographical challenges or you'd have to cut down a beautiful tree, which I don't think meets the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. And with the existing landscaping that's there, it really will be tucked behind and not, not visible to anybody really there. So I'm in favor of it and I'd like to make a motion to approve as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And is there any further discussion?
I agree with what Laura said.
Scott?
Yeah, I think it's, the both variances make sense to me. They're well documented on why they need it.
And I think what's unusual about this request in terms of the hardship, I think because it's not often that you see a, a lot that's wider than it is deeper. And I think that's an unusual characteristic. So with that, I'll do a, I'll poll the members individually on how you should vote on this, on this request. Laura?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Your application's been approved. Thank you very much. And now I'll return the gavel to our chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wallner and the rest of the board.
Mr. Sikowski, will you be, oh, will you be departing at this point or are you going to stay with us?
Yes, I'm no longer needed.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks. Good to see everybody.
The next case this evening is case fifty-nine twenty, Pastore Krans, B L L C for Bangor Savings Bank. The applicant wishes to allow a second floor tenant without building frontage on the first floor street level who have an 11 square foot hanging sign and requests variances to Article twenty-eight six nine B permitted building sign, section four, to allow an 11 square foot hanging sign for principal use on an upper floor with no building frontage at street level where the ordinance does not allow such a building sign. Also a variance to Article twenty-eight six dash seven, signs prohibited under the ordinance, section J, to allow a projecting sign that protrudes above the sills of the windows above the first story where such protrusion is prohibited, both for property located at eighty-two North Main Street in the CBP Central Business Performance District. Do we have someone from Pastore Krans here to present the case?
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Laura Harts. I'm an attorney at Orin Reno and I'll be presenting the case. I do have Terry Pastore and Heather Krans also with me.
Do you swear to tell nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you mind if I share my screen? I have a presentation to pull up.
I have no objection. I, I also have no control, so.
It looks like I have.
Check in with Mr. Wallner.
There we go. So if I've done that correctly, the board should be able to see the PowerPoint presentation in display mode. Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. So good evening, Chairman Carley and members of the board. It's a pleasure to see you this evening. I did want to also give the opportunity to Heather and Terry to be sworn in in case the board also had questions for them during my presentation.
Are they? Mike Don?
They are present, yes.
Do you both swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes. Yes, this is Terry Pastore. For some reason, my, it's like my square says, Beth's Aragon. I'm Terry Pastore.
Good evening, Ms. Pastore.
Thank you.
And did you, was there another person?
Heather Krans is also with us.
Can you not see me?
Oh, there we go. Hello, Heather. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Krans, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Harts, carry on, please.
Thank you, Mr. Carley. So I wanted to start with this slide because it highlights the importance of the move that Pastore Krans made this past December. So this is their new website. You'll see pastorekrans.com. And this is the indication of how dedicated they are to Concord. I mean, this is a picture of downtown Concord. What we're asking for here today is the permission to have a sign on the second floor of a building. And I'll, I'll show you that sign in a moment. But first I wanted to orient you to the lay of the land because there are some unique characteristics about this property and about the building that warrant perhaps a closer look from the board. So what we're looking at here is eighty-two North Main Street. You can see this is the Google Maps screenshot. Notably, top left, that's the capital where a variety of activities take place. And then of course, Capital Street where the farmer's market is and School Street also in line with that green arrow. The important thing about this section of North Main Street is that there's a significant amount of pedestrian and vehicular traffic. So you'll see northbound traffic, southbound traffic, traffic entering School Street. You'll also see that middle lane that's used as a temporary loading area. And then a variety of other uses along with properties, along with the facade of the street. So that's parking on both sides, a bus stop and multiple opportunities for pedestrians to travel, which ideally is, is what we like, right, for downtown Concord for the Central Business Performance District. We like this balance of uses and traffic as long as that can be safely provided for. So this is a picture of the building. You might not recognize that it, it's brand new from most people's perspective, although it's been a historic building in downtown Concord for a long time. This is eighty-two North Main Street. You can also see in this picture some of the vehicle travel back and forth, although not all the lanes are occupied at this point. And you may recognize that this was the former location of the Crazy Goat Restaurant and also Nina's Pantry. The interesting thing about this building is that it's two and a half story. It's the only two and a half story building that I know about in Concord. It was built in approximately, you know, early 1900s. And then around 1930, 1940, the rest of the third floor that is missing here and the fourth floor burned and the only parts of the building that were restored was this two and a half story. So what Pastore Krans is asking for is permission for a sign. This is a little bit of a complicated sign proposal and I'll strip it down for you in a second, but I wanted to point out a couple of key points. There are two variances requested. One of the variants is as to the location of the sign. So you'll see, hopefully you can see my mouse pointer here. There's a provision in the ordinance twenty-eight six seven J that says that signs are prohibited if they are above, this is the location of the sign, above the sill of the second floor window. So that's what we have here, a sign above the second floor window sill. The other reason that a variance is needed here is because of the size of the sign. So this is the visual of the sign. It's a hanging sign also categorized as a building sign under the ordinance. Normally, second floor tenants like Pastore Krans that would occupy, occupy this floor are not allowed to have more building sign than I think approximately four square feet under the ordinance. And the rationale there is, is that the ground level, the first floor of here, which would be Bangor Savings Bank and the new Pizzeria, those two businesses have the most frontage and therefore the most signage. Second floor tenants don't really have that possibility. Usually there's allowance for a four square foot window sign. So that would be in one of these windows and a portion of a directory sign, which would be on the first level. That's this sign here. However, given the substantive area that Pastore Krans occupies in this building, we think more signage is appropriate, especially given the unique location and architectural significance of the building. I'll go through some more of the features in a moment. This is just a stripped down visual of the sign to help you sort of see past the rest of the lines. That's the Pastore Krans sign, approximately two and a half feet tall, a little less than four and a half feet wide, within the five linear foot projection amount that's required under the ordinance. And also between that five or that, you know, not higher than 25 feet, which is required under the ordinance. This is a visual of the approximate sign location. You'll see here that this picture was taken in December and does not yet reflect the new awning that is in place here, but I have another picture of that. So again, Pastore Krans would occupy all of these windows essentially, all of that space. So I talked about some of the building constraints with the new redesign and there's primarily two pieces that I'd like to point out for you today. One is this glass awning and two is the significant amount of blazing on the first floor. So the importance of the glass awning, or rather the significance of it, is that it would block any window sign on the second floor from being visible from passersby on the sidewalk. The other challenging characteristic about the location of the glass awning is that it makes it difficult to have a projecting sign that is not above that bottom sill of the second floor window. You can imagine, this is a break in the awning right there. If there were a sign that hung down, it would be difficult to see from both sides. Whereas if the sign were higher, as is proposed, it would be more visible. The other point that I noted at the beginning was that there's a high amount of blazing. Here that means that there's not, you know, a solid wall to which a sign could be. Here that means that there's not, you know, a solid wall to which, um, a sign could be attached. A question that you're probably thinking is, well, you know, what's the character of the neighborhood? What kind of signs have been approved recently, um, and are consistent with the, this sort of microcosm of activity? And I can tell you that, um, projecting signs and somewhat large projecting signs are part of what has been approved historically. So this is, um, just to orient you, um, standing south of the new Pastore Crans building, Bangor Savings Bank building. You can see the entrance to the building by the person in the, um, bright yellow. Uh, so this is looking north towards the other businesses that have projecting signs. So we have Northway Bank, Orange Leaf, Things Are Cooking, and then Gems First. You'll be able to see it's that next building. The Gems First sign, I have a better picture of it. It's actually above the sill of the second floor window similarly, so.
Because that's why you're talking about this, do you happen to know of the ones you're talking about, which of them are by variance as opposed to pre-existing use or by right?
Sure. So, um, the distinction among many of these signs that I've pointed out is that they're first floor tenants. Um, and Mr. Walker can of course correct me, um, but I believe that all of the businesses, with the exception of Gems First, are first floor occupants, such that they have a larger amount of frontage and therefore warrant, you know, under the ordinance ordinarily, a larger amount of signage.
Thank you.
So, um, thank you, Mr. Winter. So we have that, um, Gems First sign there. We have, um, the same ones that I listed before, so Things Are Cooking, Orange Leaf, Northway Bank. And there's actually even the Post Diner a little bit further that has another projecting sign. This is an interesting picture, and I just wanted to share with the board because I thought you would enjoy it, but also because it has, um, something to bear on this presentation. So this is the same building. This is eighty-two North Main Street. And it was, this picture was provided to us by Jonathan Halli. The, um, there's so many interesting things about this picture, but the things that I want to point out to you are that these people are standing in front of a retail business on the first floor. And then on the second floor, you can see that there's professional offices, um, that occupy exactly the space that Pastore Crans is talking about occupying here. Now, the importance of this picture is that this is quote-unquote a vibrant, uh, downtown. This is what a, a walkable downtown looks like for Concord, right? Where retail businesses, restaurants, customer service-oriented businesses have first floor access. And then the second floor is reserved, um, or used primarily by professional offices. Um, that pairing of first floor and second floor uses is especially important here where, um, the ability to pay the rent and the taxes on the building is determined by how much money you can make, how much money the owner can make. So, you know, essentially you could think about a second floor use as subsidizing a vibrant economic bustling hub of activity in downtown Concord. The signage for the second floor use is also what makes it possible, um, so that, um, clientele know where the professional office is. Like Pastore Crans, the insurance agency and the two signs here, um, those signs indicate the physical location of the offices most likely, and, and that's what Pastore Crans is proposing here, um, to have a sign that actually, you know, matches the physical location. So I also wanted to point out, um, this concept that the signs that are above the bottom or above, yeah, above the bottom sill of the second floor windows, that's not totally out of the ordinary. So for example, um, this sign for Endicott Furniture, that's above the, um, sill of the second floor windows. And I just wanted to point it out because it's got an interesting component that we are not proposing here, and that's the dimension. So you can see this person who's probably about five feet. And I don't have the application for this sign in front of me, but it's most likely that the sign is, you know, if this person's only five feet tall, then this sign is somewhere around twenty square feet in the area. And what we're asking for is eleven square feet in area. So a much smaller sign in comparison. The other thing that I'd like to point out is the placement of that sign. And so if you look over on the right-hand side, you can see the Endicott Furniture sign, um, in the context of the other hanging sign. So that's the Birkenstock Store and the Jeweler's Workshop. And those signs are hung a little lower, um, beneath the, um, sill of the second story windows, creating a nice staggered effect that allows, um, customers to see where those businesses are. The other thing I wanted to point out is that this building is part of, um, a little bit of a rescue mission. So that over on the left-hand side is the Crazy Goat. Over on the right-hand side is the newly redesigned building with Bangor Savings Bank and the new restaurant, um, to be developed on the first floor. This is what the building looked like before on the interior. So, you know, historic building in, in Concord, historic downtown, um, in a significant state of disrepair. I thought this was the basement, but those are boarded up windows, for example. And then this is what the second story looks like on the interior now. So, you know, this is the kind of investment in downtown Concord that Pastore Crans has made. And, you know, they're hoping to be able to have a viable amount of signage so that their business can succeed. Two other points I wanted to make, I believe they were included in your packet, but just in case they weren't, um, we have received two letters of support for this variant. One is that, um, this is from the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce, who normally does not weigh in on this kind of matter. But here they've weighed in because they see that bifurcation of uses. So the, um, lower level with walk-in businesses and retail and restaurant use, um, being essentially supported or potentially even subsidized by the upper level of professional offices that makes the rent for that building affordable. The way to keep those professional offices in the second floor is to provide them with a flexible amount of signage to interpret the ordinance in a flexible way so that, um, they can have adequate signage to communicate, effectively communicate the location of their building. Similarly, we received a letter of support from Corrune Wells, a certified public accounting firm here in Concord. Robin Wells, um, one of the named partners of that firm, had, um, very similar thoughts to share as the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce, um, you know, pointing out that this is the way to attract businesses and consumers to Main Street and to make it lively and active and walkable is if we can actually keep storefronts occupied. A good way to do that is to have offices above that are occupied. Um, and that, with this final point concludes my presentation. I just wanted to highlight one other characteristic, though you'll remember that all these insignia in the beginning were red. I mean, it's not a problem. This kind of traffic is what we want for a viable, walkable downtown Main Street, especially one that's recovering from the COVID pandemic. The key question is how do we accomplish that in a way that's safe for pedestrians and motorists and, um, everyone who's traveling the streets? And we think that the way to do that here is to do two things, support the existing businesses, and to do that, you need adequate signage. So with that, I'd like to open up, um, the platform to the board to ask me or, um, Attorney Crans and Pastore any questions.
Questions from the board? I have a question. Um, in your application, you said your sign is twenty feet above grade. Can you think of any other signs besides the Endicott Furniture one, uh, where there are other, uh, second story signs of that same nature?
Sure. So the Gems First sign is also, um, significantly above grade. I don't have the height exactly in front of me, but I can, um, probably flip through my notes if you have another question and find that.
I saw the depiction of it, yeah.
Sure, yeah. So that's above grade, the Endicott Furniture sign. Um, something that I noticed, this project has been fun because it's been an opportunity to explore the signage in downtown Main Street. Um, depending on the level of that sill of the window, if that's a standard window sill, um, that height is somewhat variable. That's why the, um, ordinance has that second component that says, you know, no higher than twenty-five feet, um, under twenty-eight six seven J, I think.
Other questions? Andrew, we need to, you need to turn on your mic.
Sorry. The awning, was that a part of the recent renovation?
Yes, the glass awning was part of the recent renovation, although it is consistent with the historic, um, nature of the building, at least as depicted in that, um, picture. It'll take me a little while to get to it, but the historic picture also shows an awning in that location, I believe. Um, here we go. Yeah, this is the traditional sort of more, uh, cloth awning.
Retract, yeah, retractable cloth awning, yeah.
Thank you, retractable, yes. But, um, perhaps, Mr. Winter's rethinking, um, and maybe I'm putting words in your mouth. There are other gloss, glass awnings in downtown Concord. For example, the Hotel Concord has a significant amount of a glass awning. Notably, the zoning board approved, um, additional signage, projecting signage for that building. And, um, it's something like ten signs, I have it in my notes, ten signs at twelve square feet each. So it's a significant amount of signage, actually less than what we're asking for here. Um, but presumably, you know, part of that rationale is the same. There's a large amount of glazing. The awnings are significant. Um, we got to figure out another way to communicate the location of the businesses.
Are those hanging signs or those are?
They're hanging signs, projecting signs. I don't believe all of them were installed, but, um, they received approval for them. And, um, I do know that many of them have been installed. So this is like the signage for Hinckley Allen and McLean Middleton. And, um, there's a financial services, uh, a business in that location as well. Um, right, so they have all of the vested rights for those.
Laura, you have a question?
I do. Is there, and, and Attorney Harts, maybe you can go to the picture that shows the awning and the glass door. Is there a reason why the, the projecting hanging sign can't go between the door and that glass awning?
Yes, let me get you.
I figured you probably looked at it, but again, I, I didn't know if there was a reason why it couldn't be, as I'm pointing to the screen, like you can see what I'm pointing to.
Oh.
Why couldn't you, couldn't you put the sign there?
Yeah, great question. So, um, just a little bit of background, this is the second, at least the second redesign of the sign. Um, the reason why this location was dismissed ultimately, I believe, was because there just wasn't a lot of surface area, um, left, other than the glazing, other than the window. Um, regardless, the size of the sign that Pastore Crans has requested here would need a variance, um, because again, it's that second floor tenant conundrum. Um, they don't have the frontage, so therefore they have a very limited amount of signage.
And can I just follow up on a, not a question about the location, but in the paperwork, there's two conflicting things. One says, um, that it's externally illuminated, and then another spot says it's no illumination. But in all your pictures. All the pictures, um, doesn't, it doesn't show illumination. So I just wanted to ma, I assume there's no illumination. See, it says in the red, external illumination by customer. So I just didn't, I assumed there isn't any, but I wanted to make sure.
That's a great point, Laura. Um, or sorry, Mascot, thanks for pointing that out. Um, Heather or Terry, do you know if there are plans to illuminate the sign? I guess that there were, because, I mean, ordinarily you'd have to get, that would be another variance, and I don't think that was requested here. I know it wasn't requested here. I don't think it was contemplated by NeoCraft or by the applicant. What do you, do you have any insight there, Heather and Terry?
If I might jump, jump into, um, it might be a notation by, it might be a notation by the sign company just stating that if they were going to do any internal illumination, it was going to have to be provided by the customer, so.
Again, I just wanted to confirm, because again, I don't see any way there is illumination, but, you know, sometimes some notes change, they don't change. We think stuff is on the plans. I just wanted to.
Nope. Great, great point. Mascot, thank you for that.
Any plans for elimination?
Thank you.
Yeah, it would be odd to me if it were to be illuminated, um, because presumably, you know, the law office has hopefully the same business hours as most daylight, um, but that's not always the case.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, Chris, um, I think early in the presentation, there was some suggestion that you're foregoing some opportunities for signage in the windows. Did I hear you correctly, Laura?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Monahan. So, um, ordinarily, under the ordinance, that second floor tenant could have the possibility of up to four square feet of a window sign. We are foregoing that window sign. Um, the other, and this is under, I believe, twenty-eight, um, six nine B four. The other location for signage, and Mr. Walker, I'm sure you can correct me here if needed, is at the directory level, or rather at the first floor of the entry, um, as a directory sign. Pastore Crans does anticipate having a portion of the directory sign, um, that's, you know, usually negotiated among less fees, but that four square feet of window sign is something that, um, Pastore Crans is not pursuing, in neither Bangor Savings Bank for that matter.
Thank you. Other questions? Greg, any comment from code enforcement?
No, I don't have anything additional to add. I believe Attorney Harts got, uh, most of, all the facts out there, so.
Just, sorry, is there?
Real quick.
Hold the audience and see if there's any questions there. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition? Uh, record will show that there was no one who wished to testify, and with that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for a hanging sign above the second floor window sill. We heard testimony that the configuration of the building facade makes, um, a lower or a smaller sign, uh, essentially invisible, and, um, that there are no places at the lower level where the sign could effectively be put. Starting with Ms. Scott, what do you think about this?
Um, I actually think that the applicant, uh, went to great lengths to try and find a tasteful location, signage. They're foregoing the, uh, window sign, which they have a right to, but they're, they're not putting one in. Um, again, I, I did question whether they could put it under the glass awning, but it probably wouldn't work well there because of the door, the fire suppression system that seems to be there, as well as, um, we've all seen those signs that seem like they're jumping out at the pedestrian at that level, um, under an awning, but, um, I don't, I think it meets the spirit and intent. I think it's a great reuse of the building, and, um, it, it meets the criteria for variance, in my opinion. I'm in favor of it.
Andrew?
Only piece I'm getting stuck on, is, I think my question probably kind of suggested is, it, it strikes me that the, the best case for the hardship and the unique element of the property is the awning. Uh, it, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, or if they see it differently, but if it wasn't for the awning, uh, perhaps the size of it, that, that variance would still be necessary, but I think the hanging element of it is really because of the awning. And the awning was just put on two years ago. So that, so I guess the question I might is, well, could any, could any building just put on an awning? It's awning, I mean, it does, the, the renovation does look really nice, and the awning looks really nice. So I don't want to discourage awning, but could anyone put up an awning and then say, well, now we need to have a hanging sign because we have, we have an awning that otherwise is going to obscure the, the sign that we would get? So.
Yep.
Um, I guess a, a couple of questions. Um, the Bangor savings sign, which is up above the second, did this, did the board take some action to allow for that previously at a meeting I wasn't at? I just don't recall.
May have. I wasn't at the meeting either.
Yeah, I, yeah, the, 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 um, building came through, um, the, before the board earlier, those signs, that Bangor Savings Bank sign was approved. It's, uh, gone through, uh, the design review process also.
Right, but it, because it's above the second floor, we had to take some action at some point?
Correct, right. That, that other sign was granted a variance.
Oh, right. Do you happen to know, Craig, was that?
I believe, yeah.
Was it, what, what, do you know what was the basis of that variance, the awning?
No, I'm not sure if the aw, they, they came forward with a different design originally. Um, the signages were approved, I think, and then when they went. And then when they went uh before the uh state banking boards, I think they had to do some redesign. I think it was due to that redesign, the um awning was added. Uh Ms. Harts, if you could?
Yes, Mr. Walker, that's exactly right. So um uh I did a little bit of digging on the origin of the signage proposed for the Banker Savings Bank building. You're absolutely right that the signage and even the layout of the building itself, including the awning, is subject to a layer of federal review um in order to meet the FDIC requirements. Um so there was at least two redesigns of the signage that, there was a variance ultimately awarded for that. Um I guess it's the third story technically, um that banker savings bank portion. Um I don't know if that helped answer your question, Mr. Monahan.
Uh huh, yeah. And then just an observation, I think as I recall, when this, forever this building had a oversized protruding, internally illuminated sign that went from business to business, and the crazy goat, I think, was the last one. So I think uh one of the improvements to this building is that that signage is gone, um so.
That signage was the bane of my existence for many years.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, by the Lord, it was also a grandfathering argument for big large sign, but um so.
Me too.
I think the presentation was good. I appreciate the fact that the awning uh is creating a little bit of a hardship here, it was self-created. But um you know, I'm just, I'm not willing to um object to the sign over that. I think it's reality that, you know, maybe we'll have to deal with it, Andrew, down the road, when other people, you know, create this opportunity, but I don't think it was intentional. I don't think they went to the expense of the wanting just to have a eleven square foot sign.
Okay. I just have a quick question for Craig. Uh Craig, did, uh the, I know the undercover sign's been up there for ages, but what about the gem sign? Did we approve that?
That is, the, the, actually, if, if you get away from the uh directly in front of the building, it actually complies. It, it, it just barely complies, um but the sign itself is actually below the sill of the second floor windows, or at least it was supposed to be. And that it um uh frame was a pre-existing non-conforming frame. So rather than force them to remove the uh bar and move it down, we just agreed as long as the top of the sign was below the sill, that complied with the uh rule of the ordinance.
So in essence, this is really the first uh protruding sign for a second floor request for Main Street that we're seeing. And um I wonder if we're starting something here. But uh, but I see, I'm somewhat persuaded somewhat of the hardship of the awning. Alright, uh I, I think there's another reason for an awning in this location, which the, the pal didn't bring up, but I think it's peculiar to the buildings in this spot, which is that for a good chunk of the year, the, the solar gain on that side of the street is fairly intense. And this awning would help shade a large expanse of glass along the uh, along the facade, which it means that it has a practical as well as an aesthetic function and, and saves energy and so on. So I, I think on balance, even though it was a self-created hardship, there was considerable justification for uh, for doing what they had to do. And I'm inclined to also uh grant approval. Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variances requested um based on the fact that it uh, they're reducing uh some of the signage that was there, the exist, the, the pre-existing non-conforming uh sign. They're not putting signage in the windows and that it um is tastefully done and is in keeping with kind of the intent, even though the location is not um what we all envisioned, so.
Do you intend to move approval of both variances?
Yes, I was doing them as a group.
Very good. Is there anyone who care to make a second?
I'm happy to second that for all the reasons that Laura always.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I, I'll, I'll just say, you know, because I was the one that asked the question. I, I, I think this is a tricky one, because the downtown and it definitely could set a precedent. But I, I, I think I'm in balance convinced by what my colleague said, that um the awning, it obviously wasn't purposeful, but I think that it, it does seem to suit the building well. And um therefore, it does create a legitimately unique element.
Alright, in that case, we'll call for a vote. I'll poll the members, starting with Ms. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The vote is unanimous, both variances are granted.
Thank you, board, for your attention.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case this evening is case zero eight twenty-one, Robert and Deborah Holman. The applicants wish to remove an existing single-family residence and replace it with a relocated new single-family residential dwelling on the same lot and request variances to the following. Article twenty-eight four one H Table of Dimensional Regulations to allow a front setback of nineteen feet and five inches where a twenty-five foot setback is required. And Article twenty-eight nine dash two Administrative Decisions to permit the temporary use of a recreational vehicle be used on the subject property during construction as a temporary residence in conjunction with the construction of a new structure when such use is neither listed or permitted under the zoning ordinance and in conformance with the use limitations under Section B three Temporary Use of a Manufactured Home for property located at eight Hope Avenue in an RM residential medium density district. Either of the Holmans here or someone else to represent them.
Jessica, be with you in a minute, I need to promote them for you, sorry. Nick Calaruso, is that, I think he ends up for that reason, I hope?
Yes, he, he is part of this case.
He's been promoted to panelist, so he should be able to speak.
Good evening.
There he is.
There we go. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Alright, so this is, I'm Nick Calaruso, uh Vice President of Cedar Mill Group, representing uh Robert and Deborah Holman. Uh and actually, they are in the room with me. Um and I also have with us tonight uh Jeffrey Martin, the owner of Cedar Mill Group, and Nick Domenici, uh one of our project managers with Cedar Mill Group.
What would you like us to know?
So first off, thank you for hearing us tonight. Um and as you had stated, Chris, what we're looking to do, uh we actually were, uh were approached by uh Robert and Deborah um several months ago to do a large renovation to their house on Hope Ave. And after many months of planning and redesign, we agreed that it was best to go ahead and rebuild the entire house uh because of the extensive uh foundation, you know, and structural concerns. And you know, one of the main goals was to actually uh put a garage on the site as well. And the existing um, you know, footprint and location of the house was not conducive to, to allowing for a garage. So we then went ahead and decided to, you know, you know, create preliminary plans for a new house. Um and as you note, and as you can see on the GIS that they're pulling up, the existing house right now, it, it actually sets about four feet from the back property line. And our intent with the redesign was to go ahead and make the house more conforming than it already is. Um you know, we did a study of the houses on the street, and you know, several houses actually are, do not meet the front setback. So that's what, you know, basically uh created our um, you know, our new design. And it allowed us to, you know, we wanted to go ahead and, and achieve uh, you know, approvals and, and you know, we wanted to meet setbacks on the site and the rear. Um you know, asking permission for, you know, the variance in the front.
Are we waiting for me to do something?
No. Yeah. So that's, that's the end of my hit for, for the first variance, and that's the, the relocation of the house. The second one was for the temporary residence and use of the RV, the recreational vehicle onsite during construction.
Wait, uh Mr. Calaruso, could I, uh, could I ask you to pause for a moment? Um I'd like to go back to the first question, the first request. Um Craig, can you put up the uh, a plot plan on a, on a screen share for us? What I'm looking.
Sorry, there, yeah, you mean just the GIS, I assume.
Well, what I'm looking for is, I believe there is a drawing in the application that shows the existing house and the new house.
No, I don't have it readily available for me.
Alright. Um in that case, I won't ask you to put it up. Go ahead, Mr. Calaruso, I'm sorry.
So on the, on the second, uh you know, the second variance request of the, using the travel trailer as temporary hu, you know, residence during construction, um you know, it was brought to our attention. The Holmans have, you know, they have a dog and two cats, and um they've been looking for temporary housing, you know, while we get, you know, approval and we go through the construction process. Uh but it was noted that there is an RV that's going to be onsite during construction. Uh so the homeowners came to me and said, you know, is it okay if we, you know, use this, you know, uh this RV uh while you guys are constructing the house? And, and I actually, you know, I, I, I think it's a great idea for a few different reasons. The first reason is, you know, we are going to be taking down the existing house. We're putting up a brand new house in a, in a different location. And I always like to have a construction site, you know, have, have somebody onsite uh when we're not there. So you know, by allowing them to stay onsite, somebody, you know, has visibility, uh you know, on non-working hours. Um you know, it's a security issue as well. And secondly, um there's been such a shortage of, you know, temporary housing in and around the Concord area, and it gets even more challenging when you bring a dog and two cats into the mix. Um so you know, the homeowner said, well, gosh, we have this RV, it's going to be onsite. Um you know, why can't we use it? And I said, well, we, we need to get permission to do that. The, the other thing that we're looking to, and I had talked to, to Craig and um, you know, the engineering department, uh if they do, you know, if you, if you do grant permission to do that, we would like to go ahead and tie that temporarily into the city sewer system and water system.
Very good. Did you have anything else you wanted just to know?
I do not, no.
Thank you. Uh are there any questions from the members of the board? I have a question. Uh what's your timeframe for this whole project from start to finish?
Start to finish is about eight months.
Starting when, April?
Yeah, and we're looking to start actually middle of March. We have to get a lot of, you know, there's obviously a demo process, a demo permit. So you know, barring all of those permit approvals, we'd like to start, you know, middle, middle to end of March. Um you know, and then obviously, you know, end, end by winter, so. We go through the summer.
Cool. Other questions from the board? Ms. Scott?
Thank you. Um so you're, because actually, the question Nick asked was one of the questions I had. So you plan to be done by the end of this calendar year?
That's correct.
Um I have no concerns or questions about the variance for the, the encroachment and the setback. You're bringing the property into more conformity. It's a covered porch that's in the front setback as opposed to, looks like most of the house where it currently is. My concern is about using the, the trailer. Um so again, you, you alleviated a little bit, saying that you would be tying into the city water and sewer lines, because I was wondering how that was going to happen. Uh because it's not a manufactured home, it's not well-inseptic, you have, it's a, it's a trailer that you tow behind. Um but, and again, I understand there's a housing crisis, but I guess I just have concerns about, um no offense, but everyone wants their construction done in the speediest time. But stuff happens. We've seen huge delays in construction because of material shortages, because of worker illness, everything else. There's no guarantee that this is going to be done by the end of the year. You guys are planning on that. What's to say this doesn't take two years? And all of a sudden, you have a trailer sitting on that property for two years.
I would, I would, I would request, and I, I understand that, uh and there, there can be no guarantees. Um I think to, to help the board approve that, you know, we could set a timeline on it, and that would be advantageous and, and get us going and headed in the right direction, knowing that we, we have a certain timeline to, you know, that, that this is approved and we need to get it done in, in that time.
Alright, thank you. I know there's no guarantees, but I, I appreciate the willingness to have it be under a certain timeframe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Uh um I have a question, Craig, uh Chris. The um, the, the trailer, the, the temporary RV, i- is that? I'm, I'm just trying to visualize i- in terms of the neighborhood. It, how characteristic will that be for the neighborhood? Or how much of an eyesore mu- might that be for the neighbors? And have you spoken with any of them about it?
I, I have not personally spoken with any of their neighbors. Um I actually live in the neighborhood, I live three streets away. Uh and there's, there's about four uh RVs that are, that are parked. Um this district allows RVs uh, you know, to be, to be parked onsite. Um so it, it's not, you know, it, as far as an eyesore goes, um it's not out of the ordinary. Uh and because it is brand new, they actually purchased it six months before we went ahead and, you know, and, and signed proposals. Um the fact that it's, it's brand new, it's watertight, um you know, it's, it's not something that, you know, somebody pulled in temporarily that would, you know, really detract from the neighborhood.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, Mr. Calaruso. I'm now going to request testimony from anyone in the uh, in the meeting who wishes to be heard in favor of the appeal. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition?
We have a hang on, hold on. Martha Mitchell, you can speak.
Hi, I'm the neighbor behind you, um I think it's.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing?
I do. So my question is, the duration is eight months. What time in the morning will you start? What time will you end? Holidays, weekends? We're, as neighbors, we're concerned.
Sure, and I, and I can understand the concern on that. Uh our typical uh working hours are Monday through Friday. Then we start seven thirty and we end at four thirty in the afternoon. We don't work weekends, and most holidays are, are off as well.
Okay.
Is there anything else, Ms. Mitchell?
The only other thing was the trailer absolutely is not a concern. I did talk to some of the neighbors. It's a brand new trailer, it's parked on the side. I didn't hear anybody on the street say that that was been finished though.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Chris, there is a uh email in our packet from Nate Shaw. Uh yes, and I will read, thank you for pointing that out, Nick. This is from Nate Shaw to Code Enforcement concerning this case. The setback requested is from the road and not neighboring property lines is a question. If this is to encroach on the neighboring lot lines, I would strongly suggest the board disallow the variance. I'm not sure of the Holman's living situation, not sure they live there. But if the board allows for a camper to be placed on the property, a date for removal of said camper and completion of the construction should be considered. Otherwise, what's to stop them from tearing down the property and just living in a camper? Possibly I may be missing details and the town has a definition of temporary. Would the board please send to me the plans as submitted by the applicant for review prior to the meeting? If done properly, this could be very beneficial to the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration. Nathan H. Shaw, Sixth Hope Avenue. Craig, did you have any comments?
No, I think this is a pretty straightforward uh situation, so I don't have anything additional to add. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Calaruso, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to uh anything you've heard?
Um no, I, I agree with everything that I've, you know, heard, the, the one big thing. The, the one big thing obviously is, you know, the timeframe, um, you know, barring weather conditions and unforeseen, um, you know, objectives, we, we're, we're looking to get this project done as soon as possible to get the homeowners back into their new house. And, um, you know, we're going to do everything we can in our power to make that happen.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We, we have a request before us to build a new house, uh, to replace a house that is very close to the property line, the new house, although it would require a variance would be, uh, less, we heard testimony that it would be less of an imposition on the zoning than the existing one is. And as, uh, corollary to this project, they are asking that they be able to live in their camper on the property while the house is under construction. Starting with Mr. Witters. Um, what are your thoughts, Andrew?
So I, as far as the, um, setback requirements, I think that that seems like a reasonable use. You know, they're, the lot, it's not that big of a lot and they're trying to place it i- in a similar location as the prior structure and in fact coming in a little. And they're not asking for that significant of a, of a, a variance on that. Um, as far as the trailer, I, I think the, the, the ordinary ordinance allows recreational vehicles ins- inside or rear parking only not to live in. Um, the temp that the, so they, what, I, maybe I missed it, but I, I didn't hear exactly where it's going to be parked. So I, I, I would approve that if it's going to be in a, in the location where someone would, would have to park it. You know, if they weren't living in it, and I think we should put some cap on, you know, a reasonable time limit. You know, maybe by the end of this calendar year, they, they can live there through then. But after that, I do kind of agree with the neighbor, it can't just be, because we all know construction can, can bog down for, for all kinds of reasons. And it can't just be this unlimited license to stay there during construction.
The drawing that was just up on the screen showed an orange rectangle on the left-hand side. I believe that's the placement of the trailer, am I right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And that was a side yard?
Yes.
Good. So, so, you know, with those, yeah, okay, I see it now. So it, you know, with those, we're not giving a variance for where it's parked and they didn't ask for one. So it, it would be parked in where a RV should be. And the only difference is people are going to be living there, which let's face it, they might have done this and no one would have ever noticed that they don't, you know, they make a big, you know, commotion.
Very good. Jim?
Yeah, with regard to the, the first item, I think it's fine. Uh, it's a general improvement, um, to the law of the neighborhood. Uh, and then with regard to the, um, the trailer, I do think we're going to have to come up with some sort of definition of temporary. Um, if we can do that, I can approve it. I'm not sure that I want to go with a fixed date in the calendar because, uh, we don't know when the construction start date will be. I think we should probably come up with something along the lines of, you know, from when they move into it, um, to, you know, whatever that may be, you know, maybe it's,
I'm looking something up, Jim. I think we have under the temporary use of a manufactured home, which is the-
Supposed to be 12 months.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it says, "It shall be moved from, removed, um, manufactured home, place a lot under this provision, shall not attain the status of a vested non-conforming use, and shall be removed from the premises upon completion of repairs of the single-family residence or the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or within 12 months, whichever occurs first."
Okay. So that is defined somewhere, I'm sorry, where is it?
Yeah, that's, that's at the very end of the section, uh, they're pretty much grant, requesting the variants from. And that's the section that requires that it be a manufactured home rather than a, um, recreational-type vehicle.
Okay.
So-
So they're here because it's an RV and, and that's all?
Yeah, right, well, that other section is if your house burns to the ground and you have a, uh, un, um, yeah, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Invol- invol- involuntarily, uh, lose your home, you can put a manufactured home there for a period of up to 12 months or under the other conditions. This is to allow the RV to be placed in the home, how, on the lot when the home is being removed and replaced.
Okay. So when we get to making a motion, I'll, I'll probably be prepared to make it, but I'll call in you, Craig, to help me point to that definition of temporary applying to this.
I'll stay right here then.
Thanks.
But, but I think that we should, because that, that definition applies to when you can do it as a matter of right. Since we're giving a variance, we should, we should definitely reference that definition as applying to our variance as well.
Yes.
I agree.
Nick?
Yeah, I, anytime that we have, uh, we reduce the amount of non-conformity, uh, I'm, tend to be in favor. And I'm also in favor of the RV being considered as, um, uh, temporary, um, temporary residency. We've got 12 months to work with. Um, we heard the applicant say they would have it done by winter time. I think that's probably sufficient enough commitment, um, to, to approve it for me.
Laura?
I have no concerns about the first variants request. I think it brings the site into more conformity. Um, and so again, no concerns. I do have concerns with the second request. Um, there's two reasons. That provision is only supposed to be there for natural disasters, accidents in the, of the structure, not because someone's deciding to do construction voluntarily. So the, they're hard, and again, people have maybe done this before and, and I don't know. But usually it's to provide, so again, a tree falls through your roof and you need a place to live because now your house is, uh, uninhabitable. It's not because you're demoing and rebuilding your home, um, which is your choice to do versus again, a tree falling through your, your house. Um, the second thing is, if you're going to do this, have it be 12 months from the date the demo permit is issued. Because you could get all the permits in the world, wait a year or eight months or six months and then start doing anything. So if the board were to craft a motion perhaps, it should be that it's 12 months from the date the city issues the demolition permit. Because again, then the onus is on them, that that's when the clock starts, not when construction starts. Um, I, I do like that you're tying into the water and sewer because that was a major concern of mine. Um, but I will unlikely be voting for the second variants because I don't see there to be a hardship. Um, that provision has historically been in zoning because again, there was a fire, a tree fell. Something unanticipated and horrible happened and you need to do construction on your home. And so I, I have a hard time with, with that part of it. So, but again, I, I understand it, housing's tight, it's hard to find temporary housing with, with animals. And, um, I wish you the best.
I'm inclined to agree with my fellow board members on the first variants. I think the, uh, improvement speaks for itself. I can't see why we wouldn't want to approve, um, an improvement. I, as to the second variants, I'm inclined, uh, to agree with those who are in favor of granting it. I think that the fact that you could plant the, or park an RV on the property with nobody in it indefinitely and be in compliance with the law, uh, suggests to me that the impact on the neighborhood would be zilch. I think the reason for not allowing manufactured homes in the area to begin with is because they are zoned, they're a special area, zoned for them in the city, but that's not really the issue here. Uh, so I'm inclined to, uh, I'm inclined to approve both variances. I think because they are rather different, we ought to perhaps consider them separately if that is consistent with whomever would like to make a motion, intentions. I'll make a motion on the first one and I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, is any further discussion? In that case, I'll start with Ms. Scott.
Aye.
And Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The vote is unanimous, the first variants is granted. Do I hear a motion on the second variants? This is for the temporary housing.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I wonder if we, uh, I think, uh-
The conditions?
Yeah, I'd like to condition the, uh, um-
I'd like Laura's, uh, uh, take on that. It'd be incorporated in, um, in the second if Mr. Monahan was to approve that also.
Yeah, I'll modify my motion that we approve it consistent the way, with the way it is presented in a reference to the, um, the temporary use of manufactured housing. However, uh, the, the, um, the deadlines would begin when, um, the date the city issues a demolition permit.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion? I, that was seconded by?
Yeah.
I, I guess, can I ask a clarifying question and maybe this is for Craig? Do we need to condition that they have to tie into the city's water and sewer? Or is that as assumed?
Um, well, that is part of the testimony, that is a condition. And we would not allow them to establish without tying into the water and sewer.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we'll go to a vote. Uh, Ms. Scott?
Nay.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries, the variants is granted with one vote and dissent, Ms. Scott. And that, I believe, concludes the business for that case.
Chris, I'm going to take a two-minute recess while you're reading this, I should be back in time for the start of it.
We won't start until you get here.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I'll read the, the next case into the record anyway, and then when Andrew is back on duty, we'll get going. Uh, this is case 0921, Peter and Sarah Minor. Applicants wish to operate a small engine repair business from their residence and request variances to Article 2824K Table of Accessory Uses, Major Home Occupation, uh, accessory use A3, and Article 285-30C, Major Home Occupation, Section 10C, to allow a small engine repair business to operate as an accessory, major home occupation when such use is not permitted as a major home occupation for property located at 87 Shaker Road in an R M residential, medium-density district. Is there anyone here representing Mr. and Ms. Minor?
Yes, they aren't here, they did not need to share, snip, his hands up now, you should-
Okay, good. Mr. Minor will, will hold on test, oh, Mr. Mr. Winters is back. Mr. Minor, do you, uh, promise to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Would you fill us in on the reasons why you feel variants is appropriate here?
Um, so, long story short, you know, I, I had a job that is fairly specialized. I was, worked for an engine and equipment manufacturer, um, you know, as a regional manager. And then they restructured and, you know, due to the lovely pandemic that it is. Um, and trying to find a similar job that, um, was available, it is, you know, I, I kind of pigeonholed myself in my career path. Um, so having all the experience of working on the equipment and, and, you know, servicing the, you know, dealers a- at that level, um, it made sense since to, to, to perform that, you know, those services, since I, I already had all the tooling and, and everything. So that's why we started the business, um, and right now, I, you know, it's, we use our garage space as, as the shop and it's really just for a small, you know, your household stuff, you know, your lawnmowers, your, your chainsaws, all, all that kind of stuff. Um, I work on, primarily, I, I work at the customer's site out of my, my service truck.
No, we're also part of our variants. I say I do as well. Hi, Mr. Harley, this is Sarah Minor. I do as well speak true, speak, I'm whatever, I swear, I swear to tell the truth. I feel like the last time I said I do, I got married, so I'm a little unnerved by that.
Well, then you could just say I so swear, we get the point.
Okay, thank you, sir.
What would you like us to know?
So, my husband also is a Purple Heart recipient, so because of many of his injuries, it is difficult for him to find certain, um, jobs in his career path that accommodate his injuries. So part of us starting our business from home was that he can make his own schedule. He goes to the, um, sites for many of the, uh, tractors and farm equipment and things like that that he works on and is able to work that around his body's needs, um, so that we're not bringing a ton of stuff here. The majority of the things that are here do fit in the garage, or your snow blower, your lawnmower, your weed whacker, those type of things. Um, we do have the service truck, so part of the variants was for the service truck and to park that. We do have a sign, um, that has been up and that's, I guess, what cued someone that we had the property up. So that was part of the variants is also our existing sign that's attached to our garage. Um, so we had put all that information in there. We also, our major abutter is Mr. Hicks, who owns, um, three sides of our property. Uh, so he is Shaker Road, he is the owner of Shaker Road School and he owns three sides of our property. We do have a letter of approval or acceptance, thank you, from the neighbor across the street, the fourth side essentially, which is Jean and Alan Gray, and that is in our proposal when we submitted it. When we did speak to Mr. Hicks, uh, or the owner, when we spoke to his wife Patricia, uh, to see if they would write something up, because we spoke to them before we even started this business, um, she said that they don't get into any writings, they don't do any of that. So, um, because of that, they didn't. And then on the other side, as you can see, there's a wooded on the right side of us, which is also owned by the school. Right on the other side is a, another commercial property, which is the Murray Farm, which has the trees and the dogs and everything like that. So they are also zone 73 is, um, to have commercial from their home.
Craig, Mike, can you click on the, the zoning part of the map? Is that, is there a change in the zone here? Thanks.
Yeah, so RS into the RM. And, uh, Mr. Murray's, just for the record, uh, he has been before us. Um, and it was a determination that he had a vested grandfather right for that use of that location.
Okay, we weren't, we weren't aware of that. We were just told when we spoke to our neighbors, um, they had said, oh, well, they have their property too. Um, so they, they should be, you know, they have a zoning as well.
Yep.
We're-
Yeah, that's just the explanation behind it.
Okay. I, I wasn't getting into the semantics of it, I apologize. It was more of the, we, we didn't want, you know, I think we were trying to, um, pit neighbors against neighbors. That's not it at all. We just want to be able to run our business and continue to service our customers as we have been. And if we had known we had to do servicing or the zoning when we had put all the paperwork in with the state last year, we would have done this a lot sooner, so we apologize for our negligence.
Craig, do you know, um, did, did she say, is that the Shaker Road School on?
Yes, it is, Mr. Winters. That's the Shaker Road School is all the property around our house.
So, just, do you know, or, or can someone, is that, I mean, that's, is that allowed by right in this zone? Or are they pre-existing? I mean, that's, that's a school.
Um, Mr. Hicks is on and somebody may be speaking later, he could probably give a better history. But as far as I am aware, it is, um, all complying, compliant with everything that, um, exists out there. It's a rural district, district, the R M, so, you know, elementary schools are generally permitted in the, um, residential districts, uh, just for convenience reasons, so.
Okay.
And that, that is also a private school, it's all the way through middle school. I think it's a daycare now and pre-K, elementary, all the way the middle school. But they, we've had a really great experience with them as our neighbors and, um, so we understood when they said, you know, we don't want to put something in, so we totally understood.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I have a question. Um, in- Um, in your, so, can you please define for me, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Meyer, what you consider a small engine repair shop? Cause I know what, I've seen it in other communities. I don't believe, and Craig, I guess, can correct me. I don't know if we have a definition of it in our zoning, but what do you consider small engine repair?
So, um, when I, when I opened the business, is, is there actually a couple of different codes? Um, but as far as the small engine stuff goes, that's all, you know, your, your riding lawnmowers, your pushmowers, snow blowers, uh, you know, your chainsaws, weed whackers, you know, all, more or less all your typical homeowner, um, you know, power equipment that you would use.
Okay. So, stuff I could put in my car and bring to your house, or put in the back of my pickup truck? Not something I would need a specialized flatbed to bring to you?
Right, no, no, I don't, yeah, I, I don't have any intent of doing that at this location, just because of the nature of the area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board?
Um, how, how much, well, two questions. One is, is most of the work, you do it inside your garage or your shop, or do you do any of it outside?
The, the vast majority of it is inside. Right now, I have one piece that's outside, and that's just because of the roll cage that the customer had put on his tractor. It won't fit through my garage. Um-
Then how, okay, thank you. And then how much, how much noise does your, you know, does your repair work tend to generate? And then how many customers would you tend to see coming in and out, dropping things off on an average basis?
Um, on an average basis, as far as, you know, customers dropping stuff off, maybe five a week max is kinda what I'm doing. So, really, the, the vast majority of my, my work has been at customer homes, at job sites, um, so it's, it's very, uh, uh, minimal as far as, um, people that come and drop stuff off. Um, as far as the noise goes, I, I-
Sorry, what?
Um, our operating hours are eight to five, so I, I don't, and even that, I try not to make, you know, an exorbitant amount of, of racket. Um, you know, it's not like I'm using, you know, uh, well, I don't even know what I was gonna say. Sorry about that.
Not using a large type of drills. If you're using the type of impact drivers or drills and those type of things that you would use around your house already, so you're not bringing any, any heavy equipment to do this work, the majority of it is from what you would have around your own house, um, to do repairs and such. Um, in the nicer times, we do move some of the stuff outside to do the work, but, uh, the majority of the things fit inside the garage and we work inside the garage.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Of course.
Um, and again, this is coming from someone who I, I own a hammer. That's like the, that's the extent, but, um, when I asked you what a small engine is, I understood what you meant, but when Mr. Winters asked you a question, you said you had a tractor with a cage on it that couldn't fit in your garage that you're working on, which doesn't seem to be a small engine that I could put in my car and bring to your shop. So, did I misunderstand or not ask the question the right way?
Um, no, you, you asked the right question. It's that, it's, that add-on was something that the customer had put on. It's not a factory piece, and I didn't know that at the time, cause he had it brought here. So, if that wasn't on it, and it would've been able to just go right in my garage, and it wouldn't have been.
But I'm thinking a tractor is not a small engine. That's not the same in my mind as a weed whacker.
Does it fall under the two-stroke and stuff like that? Is that kinda how you're going for the small engine?
Well, I was, again, I was asking what, you said it was a small engine repair. I asked what that definition was, and the example was a weed whacker or a push mower. That seems totally different and a different scale than a tractor.
I, I, I understand. I apologize. We have children, and they were curious why there are more voices in our living room. So, they came down to join the meeting, and I put them back upstairs. Um, so, the majority of our equipment that comes to the house is that, your weed whacker, what will fit in a car. Um, occasionally, though, we do, your riding mowers, your tractors, stuff like that. We did have one customer that, um, and we rarely get these, is the larger equipment, and normally it's a, it's a, um, Harvest International or, I always mess this up. I thought it was a country song. I'm from a city. I didn't realize it was a thing. Um, it got brought here. If it did not have that add-on, it would have fit into our garage.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Other questions from the board?
I have a quick question. So, if I was to drive to your house on a Saturday, would I see anything that suggests that you were a small engine repair facility in terms of things that might be parked outside?
Um, typically, no. I, I mean, like I said, the only thing that I have that's outside right now is that one tractor that just physically exceeds the limit of my, you know, of my garage doors.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm gonna ask another question, I'm sorry. Do you, um, and again, this comes with doing engine repair and gasoline and oil and fluids, um, did you have to do anything with the state with D E S to get a permit? Did you have to do anything with the city? Or will you, and maybe that's a Craig question, will you have to do anything with the city? Because again, you're working on engines, whether it's, you're saying you do some of it outside, you do some of it inside. How are you making sure there aren't, um, you know, environmental hazards? I'm sure you're very careful about that, but accidents happen that are never intended. Is there requirements from the state that you're already following, or, um, I guess that's an open-ended question?
So, um, you know, I, I use, you know, drip pans and oil catches, um, and then I put them in, right now, it's, it's five-gallon buckets, and what we have is I have set up, there is, um, uh, uh, I don't know, I don't know if supplier is the right word, probably not, um, but he has his own automotive shop, and he uses a waste oil heater. So, he takes all our waste oil and uses it to heat his shop. Um, that way, we're not having, you know, hundreds of gallons of oil just sitting there, and, you know, it kinda is a dual purpose, you know, it gives us, uh, you know, the favor of not having to, to worry about it being stored, or, you know, and having issues, um, and helps them out by giving them a heat source.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Chris, I'm trying to get a better understanding of the, um, of the footprint and how you manage storage when people arrive and leave farm equipment, logging equipment, and waiting for it to be repaired. Um, how much storage is available for? Uh, and this is a question we often ask for people that are doing auto repair or body shops and things like that. Um, um, what's your?
Um, so, a- as far as the large equipment, I don't have, like, I don't, I, I try not to do it here, just because I don't have a shop that's big enough, you know, a- and, you know, like, um, Laura asked about, you know, having to have special trucking come in, um, you know, that's, that's not a point that I'm at right now, so all that stuff that you had mentioned, um, that's all, you know, job site stuff, you know, uh, uh, field visit.
You guys, we have quite a few of our customers appreciate that we will come to them, so we don't, they don't have to pay a larger company to freight it out somewhere. They don't lose the equipment if it's still working. Um, so Pete goes to their sites. He's been all over the state, um, and takes care of things at the job site if something breaks, or at a customer's house, or whatever, um, so that it minimizes the lost time for them, but it also minimizes any extra traffic on our property or changing the character here in the East Concord area.
Part of the reason we ask is, when, when and if this is approved, this is approval that goes with the property, um, not simply with the way you are operating it today or, or may next week, and so that's a consideration for us, that somewhere down the road, um, you know, the next small engine repair may move into this space, and we just need to make sure that, um, um, we have that foresight when we're deciding the application.
I totally understand that.
Yep.
Any other questions? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it?
Yes, we have someone handed, handed up, Frederick Mokel, or if I'm pronouncing that correct.
Yes, well, Frederick Mokel.
Sorry.
Mr. Mokel, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do. Thank you for your time this evening.
What would you like us to know?
Well, the first thing I'd like to know is if you would be willing to ask the applicant how much of his garage and storage shed he uses for the business.
Why don't you go through what you have to say, and then we'll go back to them?
Thank you. Well, I submitted a letter to the board earlier today, and I don't know if you've had the time to see it.
I believe we did receive it?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we received it.
What concerned me is what the applicant has asked for. I understand that code has interpreted the application, but from a legal perspective, this is a major home occupation. There are two levels of analysis here, because in the medium-density residential district, major home occupations are only permitted by special exception. So, the way code has at least listed this item on the agenda, it's for a major home occupation. So, as I see it, um, in addition to granting a variance to allow a small engine repair by variance as a major home occupation, if that were granted, the applicant still has to come back to this board and obtain a special exception, because major home occupations are only permitted by special exception in the zoning district. Um, unless code has interpreted the application to be an altogether variance from even the requirement of a special exception, I don't know if that's legally permissible, but that's just an initial observation.
Mr. Mokel, and that, that is the premise that we went forward with, is that, um, you cannot grant variances to conditions required for, uh, special exceptions. So, if there is anything that, you know, variances there, it has to be requested as a variance. At least that is my understanding, and, you know, we can certainly, uh, exchange, uh, information on that if we need to. Thanks.
Uh, it, just to make, make sure I follow that, you're, Craig, your position, cause I think, if I recall, this has come up occasionally, is that-
Correct.
A variance, if it requires a variance, then by definition, the, the variance, if approved, would trump any necessity for a special exception?
Right. Special exceptions are set up with various, with the certain criteria to allow them. So, home occupation by a special exception, um, is not allowed as a, um, small engine repair facility. So, the variance is really to allow a, um, small engine repair facility as a home occupation, which has certain restrictions on it as far as who can, um, work at the location, the, um, intensity of the business, and then other things of that nature that, uh, fit the nature of the residential house.
So, is the assumption that if the variance were granted, the conditions that would normally be considered under a special exception are also that?
No, because a special exception no longer applies at, at all. The, the, the variance would, you know, um, negates the need for a special exception. You could, the, right, that, so the special exception does not apply at all. Neither would any of the conditions need to be considered. It's strictly a variance, cause under the special exception, it's assumed it's a use that's otherwise permitted. Under the variance, it's, um, something that's not otherwise permitted.
I see. So, it gets in its whole own category because it's a variance?
Right.
Yeah. Well, I learn something new every meeting.
So, for, forgive me for the detour.
No, that was important. I think it was a good question. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Meckel, did you have something else you'd like to share with us?
I do, i- if I may.
Please.
I, I agree in part with what Mr. Walker said, but with respect to a variance, um, without getting into the weeds on the finer points of, of zoning law, the, the board is required to still determine whether granting the variance is going to depart from, among other things, the spirit of the ordinance. And so, while it's true that a special exception generally contains mechanical elements with which to determine whether or not it's appropriate to grant the special exception, those mechanical elements are still important, and they're relevant, because they tell us what is the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. And under Article twenty-eight-five-thirty-C, we know that major home occupations are not to be permitted when they have significant adverse effects, effects on the surrounding neighborhood. And then we have, uh, at least with respect to major home occupations, ten items. And so, what the board needs to ask itself is, does this request violate any of those provisions? Is it consistent with all of those provisions? And while I recognize that the board cannot simply deny a variance because the use is otherwise prohibited, it doesn't stop the board from contemplating, particularly in this case, those mechanical requirements of a special exception, among other things, is, does it create excessive noise and odors? You heard the applicant testify earlier, um, that they're collecting used motor oil. My client, and I supplied the board pictures, my client has observed and actually smelled burning motor oil at the site. It's not true that, that the oil's being shipped off-site to be burned elsewhere. There's photographic evidence that it's being burned on-site in the R M district. That directly contradicts one of the ten criteria. I can't hear you, Chairman Harley, you're on mute. Chairman Harley, you're muted, I can't hear you.
I don't believe he was talking to you.
Oh.
That's probably why he's muted.
Is there anything else, Mr. Meckel?
Um, I would rely on what I submitted, but I would also request the board to determine from the applicant how much of the garage, you know, as, in, in, whether percentage of square feet, how much of the garage, and how much of the external storage unit, I believe there's a ten-by-twenty storage building on the property, how much of that is used for the business. Uh, the only other thing that I would point out is that the applicant established the business in, I believe, the summer of two thousand twenty, and here we are in March of two thousand twenty-one, requesting permission to commence what's already commenced. Um, the other thing I would point out to the board is there, I've talked about two of the elements necessary to issue a variance. I have heard no evidence whatsoever with respect to how this property is unique, and I've also heard no evidence that this variance will not affect surrounding property values. And while it may be true, an applicant, in certain circumstances, may be competent to testify to the applicant's property value, I've heard no evidence as to surrounding property values of which the applicant itself is incompetent to testify. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard in opposition? We do have some letters. Uh, we have the letter that, the memo that, uh, Mr. Meckel indicated. I won't read that word for word, it's in the record, and he pretty well covered what he had to say in his presentation. Uh, I do have, uh, some other correspondence here concerning this case. This one is from Alan and Jean Gray, who are at eighty-eight Shaker Road. They indicate that they understand their neighbors are the miners, are requesting their property be rezoned for combination residential and commercial usage. Uh, the miners approached us in July two thousand twenty to tell us they were opening a business and ask if we had any questions or concerns. We told miners that we had no issues or concerns about them operating a small business across the road from our home, and we wished them the best of luck. We wanted to let the zoning board know that we have no objections- the best of luck. We wanted to let the zoning board know that we have no objections to their request. We also have a letter, a memo from Douglas Hicks, who is under butter, as we heard earlier.
Craig, it's my understanding that Mr. Mokel represents the Hickses, so it may be that he captured with their position in his.
It's entirely possible, but I'm gonna run my eye down this and make sure that there's isn't something else that ought to be said.
Sure.
They indicate that they serve tractor, tractors of all sizes, as well as large industrial equipment. There are two full-size tractors under repair in the front yard and an industrial lift truck. They indicate that they don't believe the home is adequate to handle the business. They don't see hardship. Concerns regarding environmental issues, noise and aesthetics. Indicates that the Shaker Road School operates a public water supply, is determined by the EPA, they're adjacent. And it's their responsibility to monitor the neighborhood in order to protect a significant aquifer below the surrounding neighborhood. He's also opposed to allowing miners to operate in a limited manner at 87 Shaker Road. Zoning regulations specifically prohibit small engine repair. This is the success of their business, but prefers that it not be approved for this location. And I believe I have one other letter. This is from Debbie Tardif, 92 Shaker Road. She strongly opposes approval of the variance. She opposes such a business to be allowed as it will clearly negatively impact the value of her home. I've witnessed large farm equipment parked in front of and on the side of their home, waiting for repairs. My concern is eventually there could be several lawn mowers and so on. They clearly intend to prepare a large equipment. And they believe they've been burning oil in the backyard, which has created unpleasant smells and is bad for the environment. And that is it for letters. Anything else from Cohen Force?
No, I don't have anything particular to add except for, you know, these types of uses are very difficult to monitor. You know, if there are things occasionally placed outside, you know, if somebody calls us, sometimes by the time they get there, they're no longer there. So if there is a granting of this, there needs to be very, I would request a strict condition that nothing be stored outside of any of the buildings.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Miner, I have a question for you and then I'd like to ask you if you have any factual clarification you'd like to offer. Could you tell us the percentage, as Mr. Mekel asked, of the buildings that you propose to use for your business?
The garage, which is approximately 24 by 25, right now, the whole thing is used for the business. And right now, with just the way that things are set up, that 10 by 20 shed, the, you know, the
The shed, the south back, the green one?
Yeah. Right now, approximately half of that is set up for that. You know, that will be, it will change to be all of that.
So that we don't keep everything else from it. Those are one of those tractors. We own a large John Deere tractor that we use on our almost two acres of property here.
Mr. Mekel, I can't quite make out what you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. My hand was over the speaker. One of the John Deeres that they saw outside that was listed is ours. We own a John Deere that is out there. So it is not a second one out there. There has not been a second one out there. We own one that we use around our property. We did actually speak to both of our neighbors. By the way, both of these neighbors, Ms. Turner and Mr. Hicks are related. And Mr. Hicks owns or family owns several properties around here. So they are related, these two people. I did not know who Mr. Mokel was, so we were just saying, who's Mr. Mokel? Because it wasn't told to us that he had a representation. We had spoken to him before the property had, before we had opened the business, just like we spoke to Mr. and Mrs. Gray. As for any imagery of us burning, I don't know where they would get that unless they were on our property. We do have a pellet stove inside the garage that died this year, so started emitting black smoke. So we had to cease and desist that. We no longer use it. And we have burned in the backyard brush when we have snow. But other than that, I don't know where they would have images unless they again come on our property. That I don't know about. I know that they often have drones that fly over our house from Ms. Turner's house that we've brought to the police's attention. So I'm not really sure where they would get imagery from. And like I said, I didn't know that Mr. Hicks had any representation. We had spoken to him and to Ms. Turner prior to us starting this. I hope that answers the questions, but everything would be stored. That's why we had that green one put up this past year and brought to the back for storage.
Okay, very clear. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. And I will invite the board to discuss the case. We have a representation, we're a request for a variance to conduct engine repair business, which is not permitted in this zone. And we've heard testimony from several of the neighbors that they have concerns about it being compatible with their, with their properties. And we've also heard testimony that not just small engines, but large, larger machinery is also being repaired on the property. Let's start with Mr. Winters. What are your thoughts on this, Andrew?
Well, I do want to congratulate the miners and Mr. Miner for, you know, his entrepreneurship. And I understand he, it sounds like he was laid off or downsized during the pandemic and he's being ambitious or at least trying to be creative about starting a business, which is always encouraged. And also thank him for his service. We heard he has a Purple Heart. But I think that the problem, as Craig kind of alluded to, is it's really hard to grant something like this and put any kind of meaningful restrictions on it. Because it's not like we've granted these semi somewhat, more than once for hairstylists who give representations. There really would be one chair, only one or two people working at a time or so many customers. But I think the nature of this kind of business is you're, you have to do a certain amount of volume for it to make sense. And you know, doing it at other customers' sites isn't, it's not going to be really cost effective to be doing that for every lawn, you know, lawnmower. And there, I just think it's hard to conceive that all of these things are going to be able to be stored indoors. I think if his business grows, which is what he's hoping to do, I think it's going to spill over. So I'd be opposed.
Jim?
Um, yeah, I think just what's being proposed here is what we're learning about the business anyway. It's really, it's too intense for residential neighborhood, I think. And you know, Laura asked some questions and maybe Craig can give us a little more direction on, you know, with regards to the preventive measures for environmental hazards. You know, I just, it just strikes me that that also is probably too intense for a residential neighborhood. I also trying to get a better handle on the, on the nature of the business itself. It sounds like part of it is going out in the world and helping people with their large equipment. I'm not sure that that would require the same type of approval that we have here because it's not that intense. You know, I think we've probably had situations where somebody wants to park their repair vehicle on their property and go off and and use it offsite. But this is an awful lot of onsite, big intensive stuff that looks like it could take place here. So I'm not inclined to approve it at this point.
Hey, you know, I pretty much would echo what Jim said, although I think I would, I think there is an argument for someone who does home visitations. I think that's a service that's increasing in demand. But I think having, having onsite to the extent that I think we saw evidence that there was, that concerns me also. Laura?
There was no representation of what the hardship was. This was, except for this was what Mr. Miner had done in his previous jobs. He knew how to do it. I'm sure you're great at it. It's a highly sought after skill. But there was no hardship why the rules shouldn't apply to this property. I also agreed that in, that what Andrew said, in order to be successful in this business, you're gonna, you have to do the volume. And there's gonna be outside storage, there's gonna be drop offs, and there's gonna be work that has to be done nights and weekends because people want their lawnmower. No one wants to wait two weeks or three weeks to get their lawnmower back because you're busy, which is good that you're busy. So I just, again, I don't think this was the intent of the zoning ordinance. We didn't hear any arguments about why there was any hardship. And it just doesn't seem to fit. I do hope that you would continue your offsite business because I think you will do well there and maybe find a way to do small engine repair, not at your house, and maybe find some other location. But I am not inclined to support this.
I agree with my colleagues on the board. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to deny the variance request.
For all the reasons stated by various people in discussion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We're talking about two variances, I believe. Or is it one variance with two articles? Craig, which, which, which do we have here? Is it one variance?
Um, let's see, we're
Yes, right. Yes, yes.
One variance, two articles.
Right.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, I'll poll the board, starting with Mr. Winters.
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Walder?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. The variance is denied. And that brings us to the last case on our agenda this evening, case 1021 Cockard School District. The applicant wishes to subdivide the former city stables building along with adjacent property for access and parking from the Cockard School District parking lot, former city maintenance shed for use as a museum, which will house and display, among other items, historic horse drawn carriages, and requests variances to Article 28, 41H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit a 10-foot plus or minus setback from the Westerly property line where a setback of 25 feet is required. Article 28, 41H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow the subdivision of a lot with 49.5 feet plus or minus of frontage where 150 feet is required. And Article 28, 41H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit the creation of a lot with 22,654 square feet of land where 25,000 square feet is required, all for the portion of the property to be subdivided from the current Cockard School District property as shown on the proposed subdivision plans prepared by Richard D. Bartlett Associates dated January 2021 at 111.5? Is that right? Warren Street in an IS institutional district. Is there anyone here for the school district?
Yes, there is. I just promoted one, I think. They should be coming in as a panelist, but I think they may have, there he is, Mark Sargent.
Good evening, Mark.
Mark, this Nope, he just muted himself. There he is.
Mr. Sargent, are you with us?
I am.
Very good. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but?
I do.
Thank you. Please fill us in on why you believe these variances are appropriate.
Okay, will do. And I keep getting an unstable internet message on my computer here. So if I fall away, just somebody holler out and I'll start over again. The site we're speaking about this evening is located 11 and a half of Warren Street. Has a total area of 3.52 acres with 49 and a half feet of frontage on Warren Street, 403.93, three feet of frontage on Pleasant Street. And the parcel is currently used as a parking lot for the high school. Also has a one and a half story brick building on it, which at one time was the city stables. The school district is proposing to create a parcel encompassing the stable building, which would have an area of 0.52 acres or 22,654 square feet where 25,000 square feet is required. 49.5 feet of frontage, all on Warren Street, with 150 feet is required. The parcel, as proposed, would have nine parking spaces, where the requirement for the building would be 15 spaces. The school district intends to transfer the parcel to the city and the city intends to use the building as a museum. So we're forward the board this evening seeking a variance to Article 28, Section 4-1, parentheses H, specifically to permit a 10-foot setback on the Wesley Proctor line where 25 feet is required, creating a lot within 40, with 49.5 zero feet of frontage where 150 feet is required, and to create a lot having 22,654 square feet rather than the 25,000 that is required. Given the historic nature of the building on the property, we feel this is a special condition that distinguishes it from other properties in the area. And creating a parcel that meets all the requirements would impact the school district's use of the remaining parcel. We believe the variance will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance in that the parcel will have access to Warren Street and have sufficient area and parking to accommodate the proposed use. The variances will allow the building to be used as a museum, which would certainly be in the public interest and will result in substantial justice for the reasons just stated. And finally, the proposed use will enhance the neighborhood rather than diminish any surrounding property values. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from the board? Anyone?
What type of the museum is it? Open to the public? And have sufficient parking? How is that all going to work?
My understanding is, you know, it's going to house the Abbott Downing collection that the city has and some other artifacts. And I believe the use kind of is, is different, the times of the use is different than the actual high school. So I'm sure you're familiar with the, the lodge gem. It's, you know, it's a big parking lot right now. So there'd be ample room for parking on off hours of the high school.
They've been talking about this for a long time. And yeah, it's to house the coaches. And I don't think it's going to be, though I'm sure some would love it open all the time. I don't think this is going to be a everyday open museum. I think it's going to be limited hours for those that want to see them, at least from my understanding of reading about it and hearing about it at different presentations.
Yeah.
So what's the business model of the museum? Is it a private nonprofit? Is it a So what's, what's the business model of the museum? Is it a private nonprofit? Is it a, the school department own it? I don't understand.
I don't have that answered, Jim, but.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have all that information, but it, you know, the city is going to be purchasing the lot or taking ownership of the lot. And I understand that it'll be leased to either, you know, private semi-private, private nonprofit entity type situation. But I really do not know any of the details on it.
Mr. Sargent, if I'm reading the plan correctly, the new lot will be L-shaped? Or?
That, that's correct, Chris. Essentially, they're using all the frontage that the parcel has on Warren Street. And it comes down that access road, um, that essentially runs all the way from, um, Warren Street to Pleasant Street. And just as you get past the building, uh, the property kind of hangs off, uh, would be to the left. And, and then around to the, uh, the Westley side of the building. So it's, it's kind of a, uh, a yell, uh, an L and a, and a U, I guess.
And it ends at the back of that, um, back of the lot. Which is the house on Root Street that's between it and Warren Street?
Yeah, there, there's a lot, um, that's at, uh, two seventy B Warren Street. So it goes right up to that property line. And the back property line would be along the, uh, back of the parking spaces, uh, for that, uh, the parking that's located just, just south of the, of the building.
Got it. So essentially, it's the driveway and the footprint of the building with a little bit around it.
Exactly. Yeah, and then there'd be an easement provided, uh, for access for the school district to continue using that access road to, to get to the parking lot.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? It looks like we, Ms. Carell, did you want to testify?
Yes, I can't seem to find the raise my hand button.
Well, you need to find it. We found you.
Great.
You swear to tell the truth.
I think it's wonderful. Uh, I, I swear.
Okay.
Uh, it's my backyard. I'm delighted to think that the building would be utilized and probably renovated. And I hate to see it getting run down, so I think it's wonderful.
Very good. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to testify in opposition? Any comments from Code Enforcement?
No, I don't have anything to add at this point.
In that case, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Uh, and, uh, poll the board members on their thoughts on this. We have a request to allow a subdivision that requires a variance so that the old stable building could become a museum. Ms. Scott?
I think it's a great use. Um, like I said, I know they've been talking about it for years. And to Jim's question, it's a, uh, Abbott Downing Historical Society. I Googled it while we were, we were ta, on my phone. Um, so it's a, it's a non-pro, existing nonprofit that is out there. But I think it's a great use. Um, I hate seeing that building and the disrepair that it's in. Um, and it'll be nice to have all the, the coaches that have been collected, um, and preserved in one spot so people can see them.
Nick?
Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of it. I, you know, I look at the criteria because I know we have to look at that. And certainly the, to me, the hardship issue is that, uh, the uniqueness of the location of the property amidst, uh, a huge parking lot and its accessibility.
Jim?
Well, uh, someone who spent a lot of time stuck in traffic on that neck of the woods at two or three o'clock in the afternoon. I wish that the school department had come forward with a little more information about the intensity that the museum is gonna create. Um, I'm disappointed about that. Um, but, um, I'm not sure that the use of the warehouse building is before us right now, so.
Andrew, oh, I was gonna say, Mr. Carly, I, I just want to make one point of clarification here. Um, this is not a request by the school district. This is a request by the city at Conquer to obtain the property from the school district. Uh, I think this district's only involvement here is providing the opportunity to, um, accept the property.
All right, I apologize. I'm disappointed the city didn't come forward with more information.
That we will take under consideration, just so long as the right party is.
This is so, we gotta know who we're mad at here. Andrew?
I have to agree with what, uh, Nick and Laura said. It's, it's obviously a very unique, uh, layout and, and parcel. And, uh, seems like a creative use where there, there aren't that many great options right there.
Very good. And I agree with my fellow board members with regard to the, uh, all of various points and will support a motion to approve. Is there such a motion?
Can I just say one more or say one thing and then someone can make a motion to, to Jim's point? Um, and God, don't anyone tell Mr. Begon I said this. I'm not sure how big of a draw the coaches are going to be for traffic. Um, again, when they've had the events where they bring them out, it's usually on a weekend. You know, it's an, it's a event. Um, I, I know people are passionate about the coaches, but I'm not sure it's going to be a traffic draw for it. Please don't tell any of the historical society people I said that. Um, but I, I don't, I don't really think it's going to be huge, so.
Well, Laura, Laura, I'll, I'll say that somebody once told the Bagans that the Concord City Auditorium wasn't worth anything and.
Oh, no, I would never accept that.
And see what happened there.
Again, I've been, I've seen the coaches. I've gone to like twice a year where they pull them all out. And, okay, we're there, we see it, and you, you know, you're done. You, you've seen the coaches, so.
Speaking of being done, perhaps we could get a motion?
I was gonna do a motion to approve, um, as presented.
All right, is there a second?
I second, and I'm, I'm strongly considering going out to see these coaches now.
I couldn't hear what you said.
I said, I, I'm, I'm very, uh, intrigued by these coaches.
Oh, all right. Bring all your friends.
Yeah, bring all my friends. I'm gonna create some traffic.
All right, we have, uh, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll poll the group. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Walder?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Witters?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The variance is granted.
Thank you, folks. You.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, aye, aye.
I'm gonna abstain because I don't believe I was at the last month's meeting.
Okay. Uh, is there any other business, Craig?
No, there's nothing else that I have on the agenda at this point.
All right, there is some, a suggestion I'd like to make.
Sure.
Um, I'm wondering if it would be possible for the IT folks to put, um, the link to the meetings right on the page that you go to when you look up the zoning board.
You know, I think we've, we, we, yeah, great, yes, yeah, that, that definitely, and we will look at that. Uh, my thought I had done that and I'll go back. Yeah.
We have done that.
Well, for whatever reason, when I went to that page tonight, I didn't see it there or I didn't know where to look.
Well, we will certainly follow up on that and, uh, take care of it.
And it could just be that I'm too dim-witted to find it. But, uh, if, if, uh, if it could be made more obvious for the simple-minded. No, we, 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 we. The simple-minded community would appreciate it.
We, we have definitely, if it's not there, it's not for lack of effort. So, yeah, we'll definitely follow up and make sure that it's there because I, I agree with you a hundred percent, same thing. You click on that, you need the link to get here immediately, so.
Yeah, so make it easy for people.
Exactly.
All right, anything else?
No, I don't, no.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you, as always.
Have a great night.
Yes, Nick?
I want to talk to Craig for a second.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
In that case, I'd just like to, if I've got a question that's not related.